I'm Zamath. City residents have reported extreme sanitation issues with feral cats. These are typically high-density areas with propensities in close proximity where feral cats are posing health and safety issues to human populations. In November of 2014, Sutter Animal Services Authority authorized staff to proceed with the implementation and recommendation of the proposed ordinance. So we'd like to introduce this ordinance that would prohibit the free feeding. The philosophy behind the ordinance is that without a food source, the feral cat population will not flourish and reduce or eliminate potential human health issues. Animals that are surgically altered will not reproduce unwanted animals. With less free feeding, feral interactions with domesticated pets and humans will decrease, which will also increase public safety. We've got a four-tier system. Terrell, if you wouldn't mind helping me with that. Basically, based on the level of problem at a residence or a business, an animal control officer would go out and assess the situation. The red one here is for the worst-case scenario. Basically, it would take an investigation, a follow-through by an animal control officer, advising the person that they are violating the free-feeding ordinance. There might be a citation given if applicable, if they're not willing to work with the policy. And we would be returning to make sure that everything is in compliance, basically. So we can go on through the other tiers. The second and third are very similar. It's just based on the level of problem. The fourth one, if we want to jump to that one, is where you don't have a person necessarily feeding, but you have someone who was feeding who is no longer available. They've passed away, they've been incarcerated, they moved away or something, and the cats are still residing there. That one is a simpler issue to abate. So the recommendation at this time is to introduce the ordinance. We worked closely with both the, first, the SAS attorney, and then with the city attorney as well to prepare the document in a manner that would work as a working tool for the animal control officers. And I'd gladly entertain any questions at this time.
Thank you, Diana. Are there any questions of Diana from staff or from the council? Seeing none, we have a couple members of the public would like to address this item. So I'm going to open the public hearing and invite Stephanie Rosino to step to the podium. And then following Stephanie will be Jan Kendall. So if you could be ready to follow her.
Hi, I'm Steph Rosino, 1660 Sharon Drive. I didn't know about this until I went and saw the agenda and then looked at the Amendment Pack. I was born a cat lover, and I'll die the cat lady. But I don't know a kid who does not have compassion when they see a starving cat and wants to feed him something. My son is constantly rescuing cats. We have two of them right now. We have cat doors, and there are a couple neighborhood cats who, I don't like it, but they come in and they feel free to help themselves to our cat's food and go out. Sometimes you go, there isn't a place you can't go. Just yesterday, when we were at Walgreens, going to the pharmacy there, we ran into a couple of starving cats. So my son, like anybody else, demands that I go to Jack in the Box, get a couple of patties and feed them. It seems to me that it's anti-human not to allow it. And children, I mean, how can you tell them the city says you can't feed the cats? Animal control can't be everywhere. I can understand the health and the safety issue, but I can't understand making a law or an ordinance, maybe asking the public. But I really don't understand why we would spend extra money enforcing a policy like that. Help the cats. Help all the animals. You know, if you want to kill them, I mean, I can understand that. But to slowly let them starve to death, there are a lot of people who are cruel, who have animals, don't get them spayed and neutered, and abandon them. Why are the animals suffering because of the owners? Do we really need an ordinance like this? Set us apart from everyone else? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Jan Kendall?
Hello, I would like to ask, I believe that the recommendation is the free feeding would be not having pans of food out for 24 hours. It would be orchestrated feeding of the animals? Like, for instance, the animals would have a certain amount of food out that they could eat in a short period of time, or would it be? Yes, I'm asking Diana. Sorry about that. I probably shouldn't be asking this question right now. But anyways, what I would like to encourage the council and Diana, and I know that she's working towards this with Dr. Vetri, is to establish a trap-neuter-release program. By trap-neuter-releasing cats, you have eliminated a lot of the problems. You will reduce the cat cowling and everything else. You reduce the spraying the cats will do. You also eliminate the cats. What happens with a trap-neuter-release situation is you have a certain number of cats, you have them all trapped, you have them all spayed and neutered, you have them all vaccinated, you have them treated for fleas. There's a whole bunch of things that happen when you do a trap-neuter. And by doing that, you've made your population a limited amount, and attrition takes them over the years. Your limited population goes away. You do a certain feeding time where the cats will come in, feed at a certain time, you take the bowls away, so you don't have all the problems of possums, raccoons, and skunks eating the cat food, making them much happier, much fatter, and more likely to have babies. So it's kind of like, I kind of attribute it to like a farmer, because I work for the ag department. You have one farmer in the middle of many farmers. He's controlling the squirrels on his property. The people next door are not controlling the squirrels on either side. So those squirrels are going yahoo, we're moving to the place where there's plenty of room to roam. And that's what a trap-neuter-release program does. It fills up the space with trapped and neutered animals, they're vaccinated, and it makes it a safer situation. So I would like to encourage your continued trying to set that up. I would also encourage the public to step in and help out with this kind of thing, offering opinions, helping out, going out and talking to people that may need a little encouragement to get the neutering and the Spain done. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Diana, could you clarify the question she had there for the public, please?
Sure. So this is just the first phase. The second phase, we're looking at funding sources to help SASA and the community to eliminate some of the feral cat issues. A trap-neuter-release program is the best way to do that.
Everybody up in dance.
It's okay. And believe me, we are looking into that. There's some funding considerations that we need to make. There are some grants that are available. We've just literally started looking at those as well. We know that simply free feeding, and what I meant by that is just to put down ample food and walk away, it's really, it's creating a real big problem. And we know that people are doing it from the goodness of their heart. We know that. But it's creating some pretty significant issues. So I think together with this ordinance, if it were to pass, and a trap-neuter-release program to be created and implemented, I think we'll have a good process here.
So just to clarify, it doesn't mean just setting a bowl down and feeding a cat at its specified time each day. It's just where you're dumping the food out and just leaving it there?
Right. And one of the issues in, one of the exact verbiage in the ordinance says that you're not allowed to leave out more food than is adequate for the amount of reasonably, what is adequate reasonably for your pet, or the few that you consider to be yours. But simply dropping down a 30 or 40-pound bag of food and slicing it open and walking away, that's not responsible.
All right, thank you. Any questions of Diana? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing unless anyone else would like to speak on this issue. Okay, close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for action.
I just have a couple of comments before we move forward. My own daughters are cat nuts to some extent. My oldest daughter has adopted a number of feral cats when they were living over by the hospital. And it's very hard to domesticate those animals. And so they do create some issues. There's control issues with them. But the behavior pattern in which allows these, the feral cats to grow, or that their population to grow, is the fact that there's food. If there's not food available for them, they go to other places. It's not inhumane. A feral cat knows how to kill, and it will eat. You stop feeding them, you're going to have lots of rats, mice, and other things, and gophers in your neighborhood. So, and birds, and other little rodents that run around, squirrels. So they do create havoc, and it's just not part of the normal, I would say, cycle for animals. With that, I'd make a motion to, I mean, I would move staff's recommendation.
All right, we have a motion.
And I'll second that.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Item number three, or, excuse me, item number four, consent calendars. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the council vote in the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request items to be removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Is there anyone from the council that wishes to have anything removed? Public, staff? All right, entertain a motion.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, general items. Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency. Annual program update to request letter of commitment in support of SEBUCA's state grant application for flood emergency response grant. I believe we have Michael Basset and Michael Inamini.
Thank you, Mayor Dukes, members of the council. My name is Mike Inamini. I'm executive director of the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency. Thanks for this opportunity to brief you on the activities of the agency, of which UBA City is a constituent member. Every year, we provide an update for our constituent members of the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency and for the public, to keep them abreast of progress last year and upcoming challenges. Next slide, please. So I'm going to give a very brief refresher. I know at least three members of this council are probably tired of hearing this review of who the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency is, but for members of the public, I'll give a very brief refresher. Some of the major programs and projects we're embarked on right now, highlights of last year's very busy construction season, Michael Basset, who's director of engineering, will be providing that. Some of the upcoming objectives and challenges in 2015. I'll get to the request for the UBA City Council to support a grant proposal by the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency, and we'll have time for questions. So Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency is a joint powers authority composed of Biggs, Gridley, Lebock, UBA City, Sutter County, Sutter County, Butte County, and Levy District 1 and 9. The agency encompasses an area of about 300 square miles, about 95,000 people. There's about $7 billion worth of assets that are protected from waterways that ring the basin, including the Cherokee Canal in the north, Feather River, which is the largest feature on the east, about 44 miles long, sort of bypassed the southwest, and of course the Sutter Buttes on the west. The goals of the agency are in change, and when I briefed the council last year, it's to get to 200-year protection in the north, which is a requirement by SB 5, which all communities have to meet by 2025, otherwise some very draconian development restrictions come into play. And to get to 100-year protection in the south, and the significance of 100-year protection in the south, which are not urbanized in the southern part of the basin, is to relieve primarily, not only to provide public safety, but provide relief from the regulatory restrictions of FEMA mapping. Next slide, please. So the major programs of the agency that you'll be, you've either been participating in or hearing about, the Feather River West Levy Project, that's sort of the big dog in the room. That's a $300 million design and construction project. We're about halfway done, a little over halfway done with that project. Michael will be updating you on that. SEBUCA leads that program strictly state and local money. There's no federal money involved in that project. Sutter Basin Feasibility Study is a federal or US Army Corps of Engineers-led program and project. It's significant because it was one of very few federally authorized projects that were authorized last year in the Water Resources Development Act. State, local, federal cost share, so there's three parties who participate in funding for that. We like it because it brings federal money into the basin. Feather River Regional Flood Management Plan is a state-led Central Valley Flood Protection Plan. It's yet another plan, and, you know, we're all tired of hearing about plans, but it is important because it does potentially bring some money to the table. It provides the advanced planning, the fun projects like the Feather River West Levy Project, and some of the critical levy repairs that we're doing in the south part of the basin. It's a jointly-led effort comprised of the UBA County Water Agency for Rivers Levy Improvement Authority, SEBUCA, and Marysville Levy Commission. Next slide, please. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michael Basset to talk about the more exciting work of the Feather River West Levy Project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. My name is Michael Basset. I'm the director of engineering for Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency. So as Mike talked about, I'm going to focus in on our Feather River West Levy Project, provide an update. It's great to see a lot of people in the audience today, especially the younger members of the audience, so welcome. So our project is a 35-mile levy repair project. It starts from Starbend in the south, and it goes all the way north to the Thermolito-After Bay. So the colors, blue, yellow, and green, are the active areas of our project, and that's the 35 miles of our project. Within that 35 miles, 27 miles consist of slurry wall construction. As Mike noted, our goal is 200-year level of protection for the urban areas, and we'll achieve that when we complete those three segments of the project. In the south, the red segment, all the way at the bottom of the map, we're working with Department of Water Resources to look at funding opportunities to repair those areas down there. We're focusing in on some critical repairs right now. We started our project in 2013, I should say, the construction of our project in 2013, and it's a three-construction-season project. So we're actually in our last year of construction, and we'll be completing all 35 miles by the end of this year. And it may roll into a little bit of 2016, and then we'll have closeout documentation and all the paperwork involved in our project. But we'll have the public safety improvements completed by the end of this year, which is a remarkableist goal for everybody involved, especially the council members here and the staff that we've worked with. We've gotten great cooperation, so we want to thank you for that. As Mike noted, our total project cost $286 million for this project, so it's a very large project, and it's cost shared with the state and the locals.
Next slide.
So for 2014 highlights, so last year, we completed our plans, specifications, and estimates for the project areas B and D. We bid and awarded that construction contract. That was a $98 million construction contract. We awarded that contract, and we started construction last year in the spring. We got all our necessary permits and right-of-way to begin construction. We also re-initiated construction in project area C. C was the project we started in 2013, and we completed that project throughout 2014, and we're wrapping up all the final details of it right now. So those were major milestones to re-initiate project C and start on B and D. And we were successful in completing 17 and a half miles of slurry wall last year. So that was the largest slurry wall contract in the country, so that's remarkable. So we were very proud of that. Along with slurry wall construction, we had associated earthwork, and we had many pipe modifications. So we had to rectify a lot of the existing penetrations throughout the levy so that they would conform with current day standards. Some of the pictures, oh, can you go back real quick? Some of the pictures that I get on the bottom, so on the left is a large-stick excavator. So that's the, that machine does the majority of our conventional slurry wall construction. And the slide on the right is a dozer that mixes all the soil with betonite clay and water, and it pushes it back into that trench, and that's what forms our impermeable barrier to prevent water from seeping through and under the levy. At this time, I also wanted, the highlight of construction for 2014, which I want to note here to the city council, is the coordination that I've had and my team have had with your staff, your public works director, Diana Langley, and all of her engineers. We've had a lot of coordination of our project. There's a lot of items within the city that required constant communication and coordination, and we were very successful there, so I want to take Diana and her staff tonight. Next slide, please. The picture at the top, that's a deep-soil mixing machine. So where our long-stick excavator could not reach, the depths that it couldn't reach to, we had to utilize this machinery, and this could go as deep as 120 feet below the ground surface to construct that slurry wall. I want to throw that in there. We had a couple of those machines working last year, and we'll have a couple more out this year when we start construction. So that's for Feather River West Levy Project. Other successes in 2014? We completed the feasibility study, so that was the federal study that was started at least 10 years ago, started out by Sutter County, transferred over to Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency, working with the Army Corps to complete that study, turn it into a chief's report, and get congressional authorization for that report, and get it into the 2014 WERDA. So that was a monumental achievement for that study, to finally finish that and start competing for federal funding and bring more money into our basin for public safety improvements. Lastly, we've been awarded, we applied for, and we've been awarded additional state grants for additional projects. So I noted the Gridley Erosion Repair, that's up in Gridley, Orville Wildlife Area, a flood stage reduction project, so that's very much at the northern reaches of our project, and a second round of regional planning. So we're looking at all opportunities to bring in funding to continue with public safety improvements in addition to the Feather River West Levy Project. So we have a lot of activities going on, and we've been bringing in additional monies.
Mike, I understand the acronyms, but for the public, could you explain what WERDA is?
Sure. It's the Water Resources Development Act, and they had a second R, redevelopment. So that's the funding bill that the federal government puts out for water resource projects. And typically, it used to be done on a, every two years, and lately, it's been five years, every seven years. So if you can get your projects in a bill and get it approved, it's a monumental achievement.
Next slide, please.
So for 2015? So we've actually been continuing our construction since we've had this drought conditions. We've been completing work in C. We're completing our 2014 work in project areas B and D. We're continuing to work, which is great. We have good partnership with the Central Valley Flood Protection Board, allowing us to continue with our construction work. But we can't degrade levies during the winter, so we're looking at restarting our operations in April, so to begin construction back up in B and D. We're going to complete project area C, close out that project, start working out on our closeout documents. We're going to complete our design work and acquire all our permits for the gap projects. We have several gaps within our project areas that required more time to complete our design work, and it was around major pipelines, around the UP Railroad, which is what that stands for, the Fifth Street Bridge, some of these elements that require a lot of close communication and coordination with other agencies and going through their approval process. We didn't want to hold up our, the majority of our public safety improvements, so we identified these as gap projects and put them on a little bit longer timeline. So we're going to complete those designs, get all our approvals, and begin construction on those this year also. And then lastly, we're going to continue to compete for federal appropriations. So our executive director and council member Gil are going to be going to Washington DC later this month, meeting with all our congressmen and other agencies to get into that funding cycle. So we're working on that as well. So I want to turn it back over to Mike, finish up with challenges, and then a request for the council tonight.
So very quickly, Mike went through a number of successes for the agency, doing the things that UBA City and the other member agencies have charged us to do over the past couple of years, but there have been a number of rocks in the road. And you're going to be hearing about some of these. They're going to, some of them may make the paper, so I just want to sort of provide advance warning about some of the things you're likely to hear about with respect to some of the challenges the agency is facing. First of all, the state funding. This has been sort of a long, ongoing issue with the way the state funds these projects in an incremental way. So far, we've been successful in getting that funding, but the state bureaucratic processes have been very difficult. They continue to be difficult. We don't foresee anything but success in getting that funding, but it always comes in at the 11th hour. Cultural resources, many people have been hearing about. These are significant Native American cultural resources that have been discovered during construction of the so far 20 miles of levy construction, and we anticipate that there will continue to be issues associated with the respectful treatment of cultural resources that are discovered during the natural course of construction. Right-of-way is always an issue. We're acquiring property rights for 300 properties, and if there's any way to shut down a construction project, it is not to be, not to be successful in getting access to lands needed for actual and necessary construction. Federal appropriations, Michael just spoke about, that's a funding cycle that we're, we need to get in line for just be, by the way, WERDA stands for Water Resources Reform and Development Act 2014, just because we have authorization, and we're about halfway there. It's the appropriations that brings, appropriations bill, or bills, that brings the money into the basin. Urban level of protection is something that I know is near and dear to staff's heart and to this council and the city, and that is to provide the technical support so that the city of UBA City can make a determination that you've achieved the urban level of protection. And while the levy improvements and the independent panel of experts that make a finding that we've achieved this 200-year level of protection next year is, goes a long way to meeting that, there are many other requirements that have to be fulfilled, and SEBUCA is charged with supporting the city's efforts in that regard. Rural critical repairs, we didn't talk about it too much. The project that Michael went through is the quote "urban project" that protects largely the urban areas of the sort of northern part of the basin. We're also have received an acceptance of a grant from the Department of Water Resources to do a repair down by Laurel Avenue, the south of our urban project. So that's additional project that you'll be hearing about. Orville Wildlife Area, Michael talked about, is another ongoing project. Many of the more controversial things that you've been hearing about are some of the proposals by the California Department of Water Resources with regard to big system-wide improvements like widenings and setbacks, some of the more big-picture, more expansive projects. Those are far into the future, but as the representative of local flood control community interests, we participate in many of those planning efforts. Next slide, please. So we have a request. This is a rather pro forma request to seek support from UBA City to apply for a grant. It's a requirement that the Department of Water Resources has with respect to grant applicants for a specific state grant that we actually already have. It's an emergency response grant program, and it's another round of funding that the Department of Water Resources is... And it's another round of funding that the Department of Water Resources is supporting with Bond 1E funding. And it essentially augments what we've already been doing to coordinate emergency response flood planning in the entire Sutterview Basin. So we are requesting that the Yuba City submit a letter of commitment in support of SABUCA's grant application. There is no local cost share. This is 100% funding. And it would support things like emergency response planning, hydrology studies, hydraulic studies that would support Yuba City's urban level of protection and other related tasks that would help the larger community coordinate emergency response efforts in the event of a flood. With that, be happy to respond to any questions with respect to the request for a letter of commitment from the city or the agency in general.
All right. Are there any questions of Mike? Is there anyone from the audience would like to ask any questions or speak on this item? All right. That would entertain a motion. Move the recommendation? Okay. All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, staffing for adequate fire and emergency response SAFER Grant. Chief Daley.
Good evening, Mayor Dukes, members of city council. Before you, tonight, to discuss the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant, also known as the SAFER Grant. The Yuba City Fire Department is requesting authorization from the city council to submit an application to the Department of Homeland Security under the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response SAFER Grant to fund nine limited-term firefighters in Yuba City Fire Department to bring the staffing back to a national standard of three people per engine company, per station. Where earlier SAFER Grants covered a five-year grant period, this new SAFER Grant will only cover a two-year period. Where the earlier SAFER Grant only covered allowable salary ranges, this new SAFER Grant will cover, is fully burdened. So it will cover salaries and benefits and other costs. The other significant change is that the grant covers 100% of the personal, our personnel costs. Historically, there's been a grant match with this type of SAFER Grant, but this particular one is 100% funded. The proposed nine grant-funded positions would be brought into the department as a fire recruit and they would rise to the level of what we call firefighter two in the salary range. The deadline for submitting the grant is March 6. As I stated earlier, the SAFER Grant covers 100% of the fully-burdened salary, i.e. salaries and benefits, of the firefighter two position, which is approximately $140,853 annually, or $1,267,677 for the nine positions annually. Under the fire department's proposal to apply for nine positions, the grant request will be for $2,535,354 for the two-year grant period. As stated above, under this year's SAFER Grant, there's no local match required during the grant's two-year performance period. And these are limited-term positions. We have been successful in 2005 and in 2007 with previous SAFER Grants that we applied for, but during those times, there was some cost sharing involved. The, the positive side to this is, is there is no cost share. The downside, there'll probably be more competition. But we feel we're in a pretty good spot to be fairly successful with this grant. So at this time, I'll go ahead and entertain any questions you may have.
Questions for Chief?
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. Some of the numbers mentioned by the chief, I know, are different than those noted in the staff report. I just encourage you, those are general numbers. They do change based upon salary and benefit structure for employees. But the chief's recommendation for applying for nine positions, should the council find that in their favor? That's what we'd ask to go forward with this grant.
All right. There's, in the chair.
Yes.
Do you have any idea when the award would most likely be presented for us to be able to get the farm back in place with three men?
The application process opens early February. It closes early March. The award period starts in June and ends in September. Unfortunately, when we've dealt with these grants in the past, we don't know when that happens. We just get on the internet every, every other Friday and hope that our department shows up and there's an award to it. So it could come as early as June and it could come as latest September. And, and even the grant awards are varied. You may get three or four grant awards one Friday. And the next Friday, there may be 50 departments that get awarded. So it's kind of depends on how quickly they get through the, the grant application process.
Also, you mentioned that we acquired two SAFER Grants in the past. Have we been without a SAFER Grant for any period of time recently, the last few years?
Yes. 2005, 2007, we applied.
You mentioned five years, so that would be 2012 if that was the case.
Yes. And, and we've maintained those, those employees that we, that we hired on the SAFER Grant became full-time employees with us. It was under some different sets of circumstances with, with the criteria back then in 2005 and 2007. This, this particular SAFER Grant is limited two-year per, two-year for limited-term employees only. So at the end of that grant, unless we decide to continue their employment, then they would know ahead of time that it's a limited-term position. But yes, we have gone without a year or two without the SAFER Grant. We've had some challenges in the past due to our temporary employees. I think the federal government, when we applied in the past, have kind of frowned on, on us applying for positions that we were already temporarily filling. So we don't, we're not in that position right now. We actually have open positions, so I feel very confident in this grant.
Any further questions? All right, entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Item nine, business from the city council. City council reports, Councilmember Cleveland.
I haven't had any of my committees in the last couple of weeks. So, but I do have my housing coming up very soon. Be addressing the situation there, the people have had some questions about. An ongoing investigation, so we'll find out tomorrow and may have a report then. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Dibble?
Didn't have any meetings yet, but this coming week, we have the Yuba City Unified School District Government Liaison meeting coming up. And we also have the Yuba Sutter Transit and the Waste Management. So I'll give you a report after those.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Buckland?
Well, you know, lots gone on in the last, in the last couple of weeks. Most notably, there was a win. I believe it was the fourth win in, in recent years of the, of the Patriots' Super Bowl. I should note that they won in 2001, 2003, 2004, and 14. And I believe our bet was, you're going to put this on while we're here. Signed by Paul Tagliabue, the prior commissioner of the, of the NFL. And it was the previous Super Bowl, but...
Oh, should I remove the tag?
No, 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 no. No, you just go ahead and put tag on and everything.
There we go.
And, and the mayor is a, is a devout fan of the northern team.
Seattle Seahawks, yes.
But, but I, I would, I would like to point out that there's a lesson to be learned from, from this, from the end result of this game. And, and that teamwork is everything. Teamwork is, is paramount in getting any job done, especially in government. And no matter what gets thrown at you, you can always come out of that in, in a winning position. So, and Brady's going to be back next year. So good luck with, with trying to come back next year. But anyway, Farm Fest, as we had been, you really took that down already? That was short. Thank you. Farm Fest is on hold. It was going to be this coming October. Looks like we're going to put it off for about a year. May have a, kind of a startup event in October to, to try to unfold what will happen in the, the following year. Went to the 93rd birthday of Francis Silva, one of the directors over at Levy District One. It was a surprise, not that he was 93. But, but the District One building has been since renamed the Francis Silva Building. He has spent over 50 years of his life dedicated to this community in flood protection and levies and, and making sure that we're safe and was out there and felt abandoned all the years in 86 and 97. When, when we evacuated a town, it was pretty much Francis left, standing on the levees, trying to figure out what we were going to do. I had a SAICOG meeting down in Sacramento last Thursday. Really nothing of, of significant relevance came out of that other than I was able to jump over with our current District Four Supervisor, Mr. Flores. We jumped over and, and met with the governor's office, specifically talking about the appointment for the District Five Supervisor. If anybody, you know anybody that lives in the south end of, of Yuba City, that's not a closed application process to apply for the supervisor. If you live in the District Five area, you ever wanted to get into government, now is the time to go down and, and apply. It's a, a process of, of interviews and, and putting forth what you have and what your vision is to the governor. You do have to be a registered voter. You do have to live in, in the district within 30 days of the close of the application period. And it's still currently open. Also had an opportunity to meet with Assemblyman Gallagher and talk about some of the upcoming legislation that, that he's working on, trying to get some bipartisan efforts in there. Most of it deals with water issues. Also, the mayor and I were able to, last Friday night, attend the Sacramento Metro Chamber Dinner along with Mr. Darren Gale down in Sacramento. Great networking opportunity for us and really seeing what's going on in the business world in Sacramento. It's, it's really a, a pleasure to be able to go to those events and, and see what, what they're doing of significance down there. And again, my condolences to your, your team. You guys look shocked at the loss. I was just absolutely elated, so.
I want to thank you for this new hat for my collection.
No, no, it's, it's a momentary wear.
All right. Yes, it was a, a sad, sad moment at the end of the game. It, it could have gone either way, but it was a very, very close game. I know it didn't, but anyhow. Let's see here, attended the chamber dinner with Councilmember Buckland, as he mentioned. And also attended the Mosquito Vector Annual Convention to discuss mosquitoes and other vectors in our community. It's one of those things that just kind of, pardon the pun, flies under the radar. But even locally here in our community, there's, have been people that have been devastated by West Nile virus. And so it is something that is very serious. And in our state, each year, there are 60 new species that are introduced into our environment that we have to deal with and figure out how to eradicate. So it's, it's a big task and they do a great job for our citizens. Attended the Chamber Government Affairs Meeting this morning in which they discussed, we had Kurt Akins from the Yuba County Water Agency there to discuss water issues. And recently, it was approved by the, the voters to the bond to increase storage for our water here in the state. And it was mentioned today that it looks like some of that money might be siphoned off for other pet projects. And so they're going to be keeping us aware of what's going on down in Sacramento so that as a community, we can get behind and hold them accountable for that money that they asked us to give them to increase water storage and make sure that they do what they said they were going to do with that money. So on Friday morning, for those of you who would like to get up bright and early, there's going to be a breakfast in my neighborhood in Yuba City and that is put on by News 10 out of Sacramento. And it's going to be announced tomorrow as to who is the winner of that location. And currently, Linda Sotobar has about 44.95% of the votes with 10,007 votes. New Earth Market has 55% of the vote with 12,257. So if you have a strong urge one way or the other, you can go to the website and, and make your vote count. And they will be announcing tomorrow where that event will take place. And if you want to come out bright and early on Friday morning at 5 o'clock to support Yuba City and the restaurant that is chosen, feel free to do that. For the students, reminder, your cards are up here. Come up after the meeting here and introduce yourself to the council members. And we'll hand you your, your card showing that you were here for the meeting tonight. And with that, meeting is adjourned.